I'd like to take this time to, as you all know, the paper or the news today has been very, not only today's, but the news has been going on for the past several weeks. It's been the, we lost another officer today here in Fox Lake. We've lost others throughout the state, throughout the country. And I want to take this time to honor the officer of all the silence, to the officer, fallen officer today, but also to take the time to show our solidarity towards our police department, protects and serves us every day. Thank you. We are right to collect, please?
I collect allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on both, please.
Alderman Percy?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Stouder?
Here.
Mayor Orr, you have it.
Thank you. Council approves minutes for August 18th. Mayor, we're to minutes and found no errors. Make a motion that we accept the minutes that was in the air place on Friday. Motion filed, and tutor, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hold on both, please.
Alderman Stouder?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
All right, Mayor's report, a couple things. We'll start off with the proclamation in regards to Rail Safety Week, which is scheduled September 13th through the 19th. Whereas 134 crashes occurred at a public highway rail crossings resulting in 50 personal injuries and 21 fatalities in the state of Illinois during 2014. Whereas 54 trespassing incidents occurred in the state of Illinois during 2014 resulting in 35 pedestrians and 19 injured and 19 others while trespassing on railroad property rights. Whereas Illinois ranks second in the nation in great crossing fatalities and third trespass fatalities for 2014. And whereas 2,280 rail great crossing crashes resulted in 832 personal injuries are responsible for 267 fatalities nationwide during 2014. Whereas 954 trespassing incidents have occurred nationwide resulting in 526 pedestrians being killed and 419 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights away during 2014. Whereas over 50% of the crashes of public great crossings have occurred where active warning devices exist. And whereas safe driving and public awareness of the dangers associated with road great crossing your rights away could result in less fatalities and injuries. Whereas this support conserves the safe priority will lead to greater safety awareness and reduction in rail crossing collisions and trespassing incidents. Whereas Illinois Operation Lifesaver declares its support for train safety awareness week. Now therefore, I, J. Marty Orr, Mayor of the city of Wilmington, hereby proclaim September 13th through the 19th, 2015, as Rail Safety Week. And the city of Wilmington, Illinois encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. That's proclamation for Rail Safety Week. Kind of segue that asked, many know last week and the week before, we had public hearings in relations to the high speed rail coming through our town and the challenges they're facing. The last two public meetings, especially the last one, was very, they both were informative, but they were very, the residents and the businesses that came out were very pointed in expressing their concerns for the way the rail is going to be coming through town. Most importantly, it came to East Street. I can say that talking of, there's several concerns they have with not only the wall being built and the potentials for dangers that exist with the shortness of the rail and everything else. But I did find it in the conversations with a lot of them, either two things need to happen. Either there's a no build alternative, which is part of this project, and also the big push was for great separation in East Street. Many people commented during that time, during that public safety meeting, left notices the same. There were also business people there who were highly concerned. We stand to lose one, two, three, and I think one business or probably four or five businesses. We stand to lose probably five businesses in that area based on the way this is, this crossing is structured. So I think it's highly imperative, and I'm going to work with the league and take resolution together, to submit to IDOT and to all those involved in our stances with this. One of the two things I really want to see is maybe look at the no build alternative. And be that if they do proceed forward with this, that they take serious consideration into great separation in East Street. There's been no drafts, no drawing, no nothing in relation to that type of potential, albeit I think the biggest reason they say it's cost, but I don't think, we don't look at it as a cost factor because if they want to look at it as a cost factor, we stand to lose a lot more over the years by creating this type of crossing that they're looking at. We stand to lose a lot more than we'll make the cost of great separations. I think we can, I think we can stand up that. One thing to find, I'll do guys remember is, the second track from Dwight to Delia that I found out is not part of the federal funding project. The actual second track is more of a state funded project, which goes through Whiteout, which is a tune, I think around $200 million that would have been spent, which is something that I've never heard until about then. Yeah, well, they get the release of money probably from the federal money, and it uses, I don't know, highly deals, but it's more of a state project than it is a federal project. So as we go through this process, and we've got 10 diagonal conferences going down to Springfield, I want to make sure that we let our elected officials down there know as much as possible to get them on board with the challenges we face with this crossing. We tend to be the last, last area they're looking at. I think all the other areas, their challenges are minimal compared to ours. In fact, if you look at our town, as far as the other rail crossings, they're pretty minimal impact as well. The King of East Street is probably the biggest impacted crossing and the biggest challenges faced with this whole addition to the second rail. Keeping in mind too, as you guys look this, the current, there are different categories for rail. We're currently a category four, most of them is a category four rail service, which allows rate to go up to 60 miles an hour, but has limitations on lengths and speeds and all that stuff that's directed to category four rail service. If the second rail is added, they go from category four to category six. Category six rail services apply, they go, freight goes from 60 miles an hour to 70 miles an hour, especially with the body system. Passenger, which is really not a big deal, which are really small, goes from 79 to 810 miles an hour. Big concern is trains can be up to two miles long in crosses on category six. And to think that the UP wouldn't push that, those are the challenges we face.
Had you, had you not, two mile long train broke down that stretches from, from Strickland Road all the way out to the crossing at New River Road and completely paralyzed this community without a great separation.
We had one semi full of bacon, not necessarily bacon, yeah.
Yep, there you go. Imagine that. There's no, there'd be no way to cross it, any way to get out of town.
So I think-
No way to get our security, no way to get our ambulances or anybody else out of town.
I think it's vital we show our unity in the process we're going about this, which is a work our residents are supporting. So Johnny, guys.
To the most sense to put it, King East Street in the center, found it's the most centered, unified spot for a great separation.
Correct. It is, probably, I mean, next to 53, it's probably most timely for a travel girl there in town, especially from a local standpoint, I mean even not a local standpoint, when people are traveling from the north to the south to get the bourbon and can't keep your parts down that way, King Street isn't. So there's a lot of challenges we're facing. We've definitely highlighted it with the IDOT people and the bedroom, I don't know what the company is that's building the bedroom. They're definitely where, you know, where our stance is, but I think it's vital that there's more resolution forums than just be kind of telling them across the table. I think we'll be moving in that direction. At the same time, you know, we'll talk to Senator Rasmussen, Representative Matthews, as well as Coy Muntz and Representative Luthman, they all have areas within a district to let them know of what our concerns are.
Who's doing all the art and injuries of the, of the proposed toll?
Of the what?
Of the proposed toll.
HRD, which is actually through Union Pacific, whether, I don't think, Union Pacific, I asked, and HRD is a company that, they're the ones that do the rent drawing, rent reexpend for Union Pacific, whether Union Pacific's bank paid them directly, I don't know, that was really never, but I know it's, they said HRD, I'll call the rent reexpend.
I'd like to get us wondering about great separation in King Street, just for-
And that's key, and that's one thing they do not have, have not provided.
Sure.
We actually, you know, I was at the public hearing, there was a gentleman that was there, that's a big Union Pacific company, and he actually brought a picture where he showed that crossing, with three rails, three crossing, three rails, same pitch, same everything. Why they need to change the pitch, other than as it relates to speed, I don't know. As we all know, the bridge construction's still going forward, bridge reconstruction, that's part of the federal dollars anyway, so that bridge reconstruction will happen. So that's an 18 month project. We are still having challenges as it relates to the roads that we use to bring these structures in to our town. Most of a lot of the moves that they come to Water Street, King East Street, and thinking Canal and Mill, one of those two streets, will be in excess of 100,000 pounds. As we all know, that our goal is to build a mature structure and perform to them, we were asking for Ryan Mill and Overlake, all of those are to pack at the end of the construction, as well as some type of compensation for communication in the downtown area. Once this is done, as we all know, when construction goes on, consumers tend to go elsewhere. And when consumers go elsewhere for a long period of time, those consumers tend not to come back. So I think it's vital we try to provide some type of, they try to provide some type of compensation and we can utilize downtown in the types of best possible terms. So that's kind of the thing we've been asking in our meetings we've had. Nothing's came about yet, but like we hear, like all I know is the IDOT said that they will take their advice. That's where we're at with that. So thank you, I'm very impressed on that, but especially with the resolution, with the residents in that area, I know there's a couple that are impacted, home wise, residential wise, but especially the businesses in that area are very concerned with what's going on. So also, under the Mayor's report, the announcement of the 215, 2015, 2016 rail rock cell, that time again, CMS, you guys should, definitely should have a copy of it, I hope.
They might not. The council just came in.
Did it? Okay, right now, we're looking at a hundred price of $9.06, which is, what did we, probably what, 80? $80 a ton?
We're budgeting $7,000 total.
So it was like, or 4,000 tons, or a couple, 400 tons, was about $24,000. So we're doing what we're-
Yes.
Last year, we spent about $120,000.
Did we really?
No, I'm sorry, it was $120,000 a ton last year.
$120,000 a ton, I'd say.
It was like $7,000.
Yeah, it was about $70,000, and I think that's what we'd like to give for this year. So really about a third of what we were last year, which is good to see. But when you have a winner like you had, where there wasn't a whole lot of salt usage, that's just how the market's perming.
And the good thing, though, is under the CMS pay, what you call 400, they're not in charge.
I think, I mean, we'll take this to Water Street's now, as well, we have time for that.
Oh, it's just approved.
Sorry, just approved.
Yeah, okay. We put it in, Gary put it in, in June.
Okay.
Do we have to accept the minimum on that?
We have to accept, we, we put in for 400 tons, we have to accept 80%, we can take up to 120, but we also have till June 30th to do that. So if need be, we could actually cross it in the next fiscal year, or for our fiscal year.
That's obvious, but-
Yeah, we were expecting an El Nino, so hopefully it will be a nice warm winter with a lot of rain instead of snow.
Yeah, but you know, sometimes it ain't, you know, if we have that opportunity to get 120 ton, sometimes, you know, the 120% I guess, sometimes it ain't, you know, we budgeted that extra amount, we had that little amount, the amount left, and it's only going to cost us an extra five grand to make sure we have it when we have a little bad year.
Yeah, unless they have to salt them full, that cheap pressure, rather than have safe pressure.
Yeah. So that's that, so everybody knows that's going on, so that's good to see that our salt's cheap this year, that's a big topic to discuss. All right, next, I want to join the citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Lots of stuff on the coalition, guys. First of all, on Monday, September 28th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at the fire station, we were doing a massive training class for the selling of alcohol responsibly for people in town or liquor stores, the bars. On Tuesday, September 29th, time to place of the announcement of a power team coming. And they motivate people, they tear up license plates, pick up telephone poles, all kinds of stuff. They've been on all the major news channels, they've been on Water, Texas Ranger, America's Got Talent, and they motivate people with positive messages. So hopefully, we're going to find a place in town that'll be able to host this for us. We're also working on a community calendar, which I gave all of you, and if anybody has any information they would like on the calendar, church meetings, the city council meetings, they're already listed on here, please call the coalition office and let the girls know. By the end of next week, we'll get a decision on our grant for years 6 through 10, and our next meeting is Monday, September 14th at 6:30 at the fitness center. I hope you have a nice, beautiful day.
Any other citizens' comments? Planning zoning, their next scheduled meeting is for Thursday, October 1st, 2015 at 6:00 PM. Computer records, building grounds, parts, health, and safety, all of the Percy, all of the Van Dyne. Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September 9th, 2015 at 6:30 PM. Water Service speaks now, these Alderman Stouder and Alderman Kerwin.
You got anything over there?
Uh, he's working, working on-
Rewriting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve change order number 126 for the Route 53 water main replacement project at $15,149.72.
Motion filed, Alderman Kerwin, we have a second.
We have a question from Mr. Colby, but he's not here.
I can handle it.
You can handle it.
I'll second. Second, well, Alderman Percy, any discussion now? Okay, go ahead.
Well, we, there's some of these things here that we're kind of questioning why they didn't see it.
Are we going to 126? Yeah. All right. 2015, it looks like it's 2015. It's on change? That was 15. The change order number one, that was an exploratory gig behind his shell station. Reason that was exploratory is, we couldn't get any type of readings, we had any citizen out there to find out exactly where the water main, and we had different, different readings that were coming back. So in the, in the contract, we represent them, you know, our best guess or our best location, but if they have to do exploratory outside the contract, it's, so that one was an exploratory gig. It costs, I'd say, $158 for us to try to do that. So that's, that's one.
Were they taking it up anyhow? Was it take up and replacement?
No, that's the six inch that was there.
But I thought we was-
It might have been, it might have been a replacement, it was, it's replacement, not take up. So I don't believe they took it, I don't think we ripped it out, I think we covered it up and shut it off. So it's dead. But no, 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 it's an exploratory, they just wanted to know where it was located. So they wouldn't hit it.
Didn't they lay a line down behind that from, from-
There's another one, another change order where they laid a new line down.
Okay, from, from Burger King all the way back out to Cuthbert Road, or whatever you guys, North Village?
Yeah, I think that's, that's another change order that comes in.
But wasn't that part of the-
No, we have, we have a lot of unknowns in this project because of not being able to locate where the systems were, and especially service lines. And then we wanted to disconnect extras because of the way things were built, so we wanted to clean up as much as we can.
So we laid a new line right there where we found out where the old line was.
And that would, and that's covered under-
Oh, no, is that what we did?
Yes, and that's covered under the agreement.
Right.
New lines are.
So we, I guess we're pressing the 858.
Yeah, we had, we had to go find where the line was located, so it was exploratory gigs. Couldn't find it normal, normal way. And then the contract, that's an extra cost for explorers instead of using any, we had any citizen as a backup, and that's covered under the contract, that's not a change order.
Didn't we, didn't we purchase a locator for Jack and for all the other crews to use that could locate empty conduit, empty sewer pipe, and that scheme did not work?
Just couldn't find it. You know, we didn't want to start digging up a lot of other stuff, you know, just to want to make sure where we were. Okay. The next one is the 2500, that was basically another explor, another unknowing. We, and they ended up breaking a one inch water service before they even started digging. They met with the homeowner, the homeowner, his best guess was where the water service line was. Gary Van Dyne thought where he knew it was, Jack thought where he knew it was. So they started the gig, they did their Julie's, and they thought they're digging in a, in a safe spot, and they ended up getting the one inch service line. So that got broken. So that cost to reconnect and do everything properly, that was a $2,500, $2,596.
And you're saying that we, that nobody knew where that service was, and it was not, and once again, couldn't be found where it was located?
Couldn't be found, yeah. And then I say, they even went to history, you know, grabbing the homeowner, who'd been there a long time, and they thought the service line came in, looked at the house where the service is at, looked at the angle, and it's probably where it's at, wasn't there, it was another spot.
Is that something our crew could have fixed, once it was exposed?
Well, they did, they fixed everything.
Our crew did, or Austin Tyler?
No, Austin Tyler did.
I'm asking, is this something that our public works could have fixed?
Our public works guys are all stretched right now. We want to get it done. So that one was 25, almost 20 to 2600 dollars. The next one is 1,275 dollars, 10 cents. This was a sewer, it was an unmarked sanitary sewer service for Burger King, and it had to be moved because it was in conflict with the pipe and the casing. So they found it, it's unique, it was way out in the parking lot, it was 200 feet west of the building, in the parking lot, spot where it shouldn't have been. So it was unmarked, we, they got it moved, and everything, that price came in at 1,275 dollars.
So are they going to tie that in with the one across the road?
This, this was sewer, this was a service.
That's what I'm talking about, the sewer that comes across 53, where they got them welcome to Wilmington's?
Oh, that I don't know. This was, this was heading into the Burger King's, oh, I don't know if that's the one that goes under, this, this is the water main project. Next one's 1,822 dollars, Kobe told me. This is, no, this one is-
1822.
Yeah, 1822, but shit, yeah. Another, another conflict of a service line, so they had to remove it, and then they did the, with the vault over by Burger King. So it was one half inch line. As we're finding out all over the place, we got lines that now we're to be cleaned up with all the GIS markings.
Were all these lines metered, or did you find any that weren't metered?
No, they, good question, no one said they found, they weren't metered because they weren't going into a, they weren't going into a, a homeowner business, so. The next is the 1,400 one, that was another sanitary sewer, they removed it, and basically, this one was kind of unique.
That was a little vulnerable.
This is the one, this one, this one was actually in conflict, it was going over the top of the water line, which you can't do.
Absolutely not.
So at first, Austin Tyler thought they could maybe put it in casing and that would work. Once they were designing to do that, Kobe got out there, when they called, they already got the pipe in there, so the casing Kobe looked at, and so Gary and Darren and, and Jack, no, they disagreed. Yeah, but yeah, casing is permitted under EPA to encase it, but they still would have had to cut out a part of the pipe so the fall would happen. Well, you're not going to, I mean, not even compromise.
Yeah, what good's a casing with a hole?
So they, they had, this was on a Friday, so what has, what has happened, they said, no, you guys got to do it right. So we refused the bill for the, for that change order, Kobe did, and they resubmitted the one that we, Kobe agreed for them to do, that ran into overtime because they had the job done on Friday, and then he had to come out and finish up on Saturday morning, real quick. So that's why you see an overtime of eight hours, but we need to get it done so we can keep the project moving and keep Burger King and all those people moving forward. Oh, we did deny the, we did deny their, their change order for the work that they did before Kobe went out there. The next one was a change order directed by us, when we found out we had so many conflicts in the easement areas, in the grassy areas by Radio Shack, Marathon, AFW, it was best at that point to start moving, as you noticed in the street area. So they decided to put vaults up. So they found three locations, they wanted to put the mains in the vaults for the service lines connection, so in the future, they would have to dig down there if there was a problem, because we all know connections always involve the problems with leaks and those three businesses that we want to have there. So that was a change order Kobe and Jack requested, to put these in vaults, and the vaults are 2,395 dollars a piece, there was three of them, so that came to, that was the highest one, $7,185. And the next one after that, Kobe told me, that's the last one. So we add them all up, give them $15,149.72.
Is that project complete?
No, yet. I don't know where, what's not yet, but they're close. I know they're up to-
What's your completion date?
Well, actually, it's supposed to be October 1st, I think, but well, I don't just get to do it. I, I know they're doing a cleanup and all that's going to be coming up, because we have roadwork we got to do now, and all the restoration.
The only complaint I have, in viewing their operation, when I, when I was coming through town the other day, and I was looking for Kobe, I was trying to find him, they were, they were probably 18 inches from that power line at times, with that back hole underneath there. There's a 10 foot minimum on that, period. These guys, they were well within two feet at times. They weren't, they were absolutely not concerned, they just kept rolling right by, and I'm thinking, you know, that's not how it's done, you know, you back out, you boom out, but, you know, in order to save time, they kept rolling, and I was, I was shocked, I couldn't believe that they didn't jump by any electricity or throw any break.
I seen it too, but I was looking, I know they were close to the Comcast line, which is the very lowest line, but they seemed to have a little distance away from the-
Well, when they, when those laterals crossed, like the one that crosses over by the chickadee and stuff, those were the ones that they were really close on, and those were power. And that's, those were, I was very concerned. really close on, and those were power, and that's, those were, I was very concerned about that, so you need to have, make a note for Colby to watch that, because, you know, that's, that's an ocean violation, and they could've put us out of power, some businesses.
I gotta mention, when Colby, the dust, I think, yeah, why didn't factor that into the whole class of things? We should've had a water truck out there that'd keep the dust down at the end of the project, because it, it got pretty bad. When it started raining, it was fine, but, I mean, for the project, especially on fifty-three, there was a lot of dust there, so. Okay, any further discussion?
There, okay, I mean.
Can I roll call both, please?
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall? Alderman Tudor? Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
I think it's a different.
Yeah, you did.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thanks, though.
Thanks.
And Colby, Chris, here.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, another one. I move to approve payment request number one to Austin Tyler Construction Incorporated, the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents for the Route fifty-three water main replacement pipe.
Motion by Alderman Curwin, do we have a second? Second. Second by Alderman Larry Hall, any discussion?
Um, can you tell us whether they have made the, uh, the, this goal to, does it, is they yet, are they far along?
Yeah, Colby approved it all, and all the documents have come in, you can sign it off, that's my question.
Further discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
All right, last one, I move to authorize the submittal of a request for loan disbursement to the, to the Illinois Water Revolving Loan Fund for construction and engineering expenses incurred on this project, in accordance with the, with the local, with the loan agreement.
Motion by Alderman Curwin, do we have a second?
No, it's not gonna be.
Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion?
Yes, uh, what, what does this mean?
Basically, the loan that we got for this project, this water main replacement project, um, that's your authorization and disbursement to release of that money, that loan that we got for this water main project, till we write a check to Austin Tyler.
Right, that's it. You, you approved to, um, the, the bills legitimate, and you're approving that that bill can go forward. Then it gets submitted to the EPA, they will in turn pay us, and then we can in turn pay the latter. So the check to Austin Tyler will actually come from us, but we don't have to put out our cash first, it will come through the loan proceeds.
Further discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September ninth, at five thirty PM.
Please, the next, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September eighth, at five thirty.
Finance administration, land acquisition, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Studer.
I move to approve the accounts payable report, the amount of four hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents as presented by the city accountant.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yeah.
Alderman Evans? Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve the amendment, settlement, auction agreement.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Van Dyne, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I've reviewed the agreement, I noticed there's been some improvements made on this, uh, by the auctioneer, and I just would like to make the comment that it's unfortunate that we're in this situation, and I, I know what we're trying to accomplish by raising this revenue, and, um, I spent considerable amount of time discussing this with, uh, Mr. Graff today, because of, obviously, I was concerned about this, and asked him to table it, and, um, I'm, I'm gonna support this because of the fact that, uh, we're kind of, you know, between a rock and a hard place, and so, currently unfortunate situation we're in, and we, we obviously need to do a better job in the future to avoid getting ourselves in these kinds of situations, uh, you know, in hindsight, which is an easy way to look, I, I would've never, um, I would've never supported this move, not, not, you know, knowing how it was gonna be funded and, and with the amount of, uh, the amount of uncertainties that we're attached to it, but, uh, at this point, I, I understand, you know, we, we need to have some bargaining leverage to try to dig ourselves out of this hole, so, you know, in, in the scheme of things, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but, uh, I just wanna let you know that I'm gonna be more vigilant in the future to try to keep us from getting in these situations.
Thanks, Alderman Studer, Studer, I understand, I mean, you know, we, we face challenges all the time, and we face ways to, uh, try to, uh, encourage improvements within our town, that's what we do, we're all, we're, you know, when a lot, some things come out, we're, we're, uh, predictors, we try to, um, predicate, uh, what's gonna happen, and, and sometimes, a lot of it is, we hope for the best, but I think that we don't, um, we don't, um, take on these challenges and the board within them, we, sometimes we're doing a disservice for, for doing nothing, so.
Are we still gonna have a bid book?
What's that?
Open the book?
Yes, we will have a bid book according to the current contract, the way the contract reads it. Um, if it's less than two hundred thousand or less, we have the option to, uh, to not even take it. Um, if, if the bid comes up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and we refuse a bid, then we're, we're, um, we have to pay the auction at five thousand dollars. Um, if it's anything over two hundred and thirty, and we're still refusing a bid, then it's, that's only if we refuse a bid, then other things don't come through. But, uh, so what we're basically doing before, initially, we had it for, I think it was at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So basically, we're up to, um, you know, we're up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for minimal obligation, that we, we decided to refuse it. That's kind of where we're at.
Well, I'll let you know, Mr. Mayor, that I, I can't, I can't accept it. Uh, I feel that we're, we're taken from a, a positive thing, which, down the road, it probably could not be positive, but to bail us out of something that we need to watch a little bit better than what we did, so I, I kinda agree with what Frank said, but I, there's no way I could've go with this, so.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, that's, I mean, we, we, consciousness, that's what we have, we don't have to bail, we all have to go to our consciousness.
Like, for Alderman Studer, that, you know, that makes sense?
There's a lot of things.
We got, we got ourselves a quote, it's what we get.
As we go through the challenges, there's some things that we face that we don't like, and sometimes we have to make those hard decisions. Any, uh, further discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
We have seven yes, one no, motion passes.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education of Wilmington Community School District, number two oh nine U.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I second that, second by Alderman Larry Hall, any discussion?
Well, not mistaken, really, nothing's changed, right?
Exactly, I forget the last times, yeah, another year.
Just cover all the crossing garden and everything too.
Yeah.
And work in school events, and, and all of that is.
The payment out is everything, yeah, yeah, I believe the school board's already taken action.
Yeah, they, they agree, and, and, probably.
Any further discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September fifteenth, at six PM.
Uh, ordinance and license committee, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans?
Yes, the mayor has a second meeting, an order providing for the cutting and removal of nuisance tree. Second meeting for the, for chapter ninety-six, for site work, it's, uh, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Uh, personnel and collective bargaining, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Percy.
I have one here for the mayor. I move to approve resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero nine, a resolution approving fiscal year two thousand sixteen salaries for exempt and salary employees.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Percy, any discussion? Roll call both.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Uh, we do have executives tonight.
Sure. Uh, city administrator's report, Mr. Graham. Your report? Attorney's report, Mr. Urban.
Thanks, in the last couple of weeks, I have prepared some applications for property tax exemption for some city property. Salitex property, that was purchased, and also the police station, filing that this week.
You? Uh, need a motion for executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move into executive session at seven forty-one, for the following matters of land acquisition and semi-annual review of executive session minutes.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Evans, call both.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
All right, uh, need a motion to come out of executive session?
I make a motion to come out of executive session at eight oh seven.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Curwin?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Uh, action was taken.
There you go, thank you very much. Take, uh, motion for adjournment, so, uh, second?
Here.
Bye, sir.
Bye.